Beautiful and you need to come in there and see me.
Okay.
It's turned out so cute, it really did. Yeah.
Is the Magnesia Business doing well?
Yes, yes, I'm very glad to be there. Yeah, very glad.
Okay, we're in.
President, they know who's the president next time.
Okay, I'll call the order. The March 18th, 2024 Regular Meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance and then our invocation. Pastor Josh couldn't be here tonight, and I'm going to ask Sheriff Bill Wilkley to give our invocation. So if everyone please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the beloved which is theirs, for the nation of God and for the people of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you again and offer a prayer this evening. Please feel free to join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our country where we can come together, ask our questions, discuss our concerns, and share the things that are on our hearts and minds about the decisions we must make going forward. Our prayer tonight, Lord, is that you would give us a sense of peace within our hearts and in our words, and share in a brotherly and sisterly way the things which were on our heart so that the right thing may be done. We pray that the truth prevails and that opportunities for the truth are presented here this evening so that all may see and understand the process of government which men and women have fought and even died for, for centuries, to ensure that even unto this day and in this place and among these people, we have the freedom to address our government. We thank you, Lord, and pray for the health and welfare as we depart here today. Pray that whatever decisions here today will be only in the best interest of Haywood County and its residents. I pray, Lord, that you keep a special hand upon those who are about to make this decision and those who are about to speak to it so that only the right thing is done. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, our next order of business will be public hearings, but we do not have one tonight. And then after that will be our public comment session. I have, do have some folks that have signed up to speak. You can speak for up to three minutes, if you would, and then Amy keeps the time and so she'll let you know, and there's a buzzer that goes off. If you would finish up your thoughts when the buzzer goes off, if you would, and then we can continue to move on. Do not, audience members may not address the board at any time during deliberations unless you're acknowledged or recognized by me. Okay, our first person to sign up to speak tonight is Eldon Adamson. And if you would, when you speak, make sure you speak into the microphone. Just kind of pull it down there for you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Eldon Adamson. I'm Johnny come lately, but I just heard about the addition of the $28 million five-star hotel, hotel, in my opinion, for the law enforcement. I thought that, you know, we are all subject to this manual. This is the manual that we are supposed to follow. And of course, we've fallen so far from the manual about how we are to treat lawbreakers. In fact, we all have been guilty of that ourselves, and there's remedy in here, you know, like for stealing. In some cases, the criminal was supposed to repay twice if he stole. The second time is three times, and of course, the third time, strike out. And if he couldn't pay, then he was sold into slavery to someone who would care for him and then pay for the crime. And there were other remedies for manslaughter, murder, murder, of course, was death. Other minor crimes was whipping. So there was remedy. There was no long-term prisons in here. Now, you say, well, Eldon, we don't have that in the New Testament. I disagree with you. In Ephesians, Chapter 6, and Colossians, Chapter 3 and 4, Paul addresses those who were slaves and those who were masters. So we had masters and slaves in the New Testament, and there was remedy for the crimes in the New Testament. If you don't believe that, ask Ananion Safara when they lied. Remember how they lied about the selling of their home and contributing all of the money when they only had given 50%? So it seemed like a real burden to add $28 million on the back of the people when there are remedies that could be even done today. In fact, my son-in-law, who worked for the prison system back in his youth, he worked, he was a guard. In fact, he told me one day, if he wasn't married to my daughter and had a family, he might think about committing a crime to be put in a jail because he had to chauffeur the prisoners even to the dentist and to the doctor. So they had first-class treatment above even the citizens. Most of you don't have that privilege in here today where everything is taken care of, including their dentist and their healthcare. They got the best program going. Not only you got 28 million, I'm a former CPA and businessman, but that building's going to cost you probably between 60 and 70 million dollars before you get it paid with interest, and it's going to cost you more than 28, and the additional administrative cost that you're going to have to pay each and additional year, whereas they should be paying for their crime. And I thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adamson. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Trudy Schmidt.
It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to address you, and as you see on the page, all I wrote down was taxes because, you know, it's kind of like the case that went to the Supreme Court today, what you read on Facebook, or what is or isn't put on, or who puts it on and who doesn't, and what's the truth and what's the remedy? What are the taxes going to be? You know, we hear about, oh, it's just going to be two cents. But what about the revaluation of our property? Will that get done after the next election? So we know who really votes for those taxes to be increased or for that evaluation? Hopefully, you would address what we really are going to pay for this jail that started out at 16 million, winding up at 28 million, 500,000 plus, plus. We don't even know how many people you're going to employ later, what it's going to cost, what the insurance will be, and what those wonderful Motel 6-type accommodations are going to be for thieves and criminals that come into our area.
Okay. The next person to sign up to speak is Sheri Morgan.
Hello, my name is Sheri Morgan. I've been reading about the new detention center approval, and citizens of Haywood County still have some questions about how their taxpayer money is going to be spent over the years to come. The project started with 17 million price tag and now has increased to 27.5 million with a 1.5% property tax increase and a 64% revaluation of the appraised value of our homes. The law-abiding citizens are paying for this project, so the county commissioners should address their questions. Here are the questions I have compiled from polling citizens. What is the timeline and deadlines for completion of the project? Citizens have not heard from the bank financing the project. What are the terms of the loan and what is the interest rate? Is the rate a fixed rate for the entire term or is it a variable rate? What is the increase in operating cost of the new jail, including adding employees, increasing insurance, and other costs incurred to run the new jail? Does the annex need to be demolished and relocated to build the new jail, and where will the new annex be built? Is the new jail a pod construction similar to the existing jail? And what is the planning cost to bring the existing jail up to standards with the new jail? I want to thank Sheriff Wilkie for coming across the room just a few moments ago to answer these following questions. The existing jail has been running below capacity even with housing detainees from other counties. If we needed extra space, why don't we stop housing detainees from other counties? He informed me that right now we only have one detainee from another county. With all the additional space you're building, what is the plan for the unused capacity? Do we want criminals from other counties filling our new detention center? Will criminals be released into our county? Sheriff Wilkie said no, they will be taken back to their home counties. Could our detention center turn into a motel for homeless vagrants or illegal immigrants that has happened in numerous counties across the country? Sheriff Wilkie has given a promise this will never happen in his jail. Thank you to Sheriff Wilkie for coming across the room and answering these questions. To the county commissioners, please address these questions because the taxpaying citizens want to know these answers. And for the record, I do want to thank Terry Ramey for voting no before these valid questions from the public have been answered. He is always mindful of our public safety and keeping the public engaged and informed. Thank you.
Okay, the next person to stand up to speak is Jamie Burghout. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong. Correct.
My name is Jamie Burghout. I am a resident of Waynesville, mother to the loud one-year-old back there with her father. And I'm also a victim of crime since having moved to Waynesville pretty much immediately for over four years now. So I'm speaking from the perspective of a woman who has suffered not being helped immediately by the sheriff's office, as well as a long history of the district's attorney's office not prosecuting and sending criminals to jail. Repeat offenders released without supervision or with monitors that are actually not controlled by the sheriff's office. There is a very serious public safety concern, not just for my family, because, you know, we've been loud and outspoken about this and still not really received the help that I believe we should be afforded. And I'm not talking about anything progressive here. These are basic human rights, the right to not be tortured, the right to enjoy the privacy of my home and five acres of private property, the right to not be intimidated as a witness of the state. And it has jeopardized law enforcement in the process of it. So I guess my question is, if we're building a nice fancy jail to accommodate all the things that I no longer have because I have been a victim of crime, as far as my finances, my insurance, you know, that no longer exists. So how can I be assured that with this money spent, without the prosecutors to prosecute the crime, and with criminal defense attorneys writing the narrative for the police who are investigating and for the district attorney's office who is prosecuting crime, you know, what's the point in a jail if they're not willing to go there and have to actually be punished for what they've done? This is not just happening to me, and anyone who has helped me has been retaliated against, my family has continually been retaliated against. So I'm speaking for women who are not here today as well as men. And from the perspective of, this is a lot of money, tell us the value to humans who live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person to sign up to speak is Janet Preston.
I'm Janet Preston, and I'd like to comment on y'all's handling of the jail expansion project. On Sunday, March 3rd, I went into the county, onto the county's website and reviewed the agenda for the commissioners' meeting the next day. I was expecting an item regarding the county jail project but didn't see anything of interest, so I didn't attend. Imagine my surprise and anger when I found out later Monday that there was indeed a vote on this. I went back to see how I had missed it, and here's how. On the meeting agenda, that item and vote was detailed as, and I quote, "Request approval of resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Haywood, North Carolina, approving an installment financing contract and delivery thereof and providing for certain other related matters," dash, "County Manager Bryant Moorhead." It literally said nothing about the jail, and I'm sure I wasn't the only citizen who missed this meeting due to the vague agenda item. Was this on purpose due to the fact that this project has become too expensive and now controversial and that many in the county are against this? If I had to bet, I'd say it was intentional. I want to make sure that, number one, county residents understand that this is being done and likely purposely to keep us in the dark about what our commissioners and county folks are doing with a project that they know may be unwanted by many. Number two, that you all know that just because you voted and passed this ridiculous waste of tax dollars doesn't mean there won't be consequences. Commissioners Ensley and Rogers, you better understand that there are many registered Republicans who will not be voting for you this fall due to this type of behavior. I know that we won't always agree on every issue, and that's fine. I don't think I've ever voted for anyone whom I agreed with on every single issue. However, this dirty, underhanded behavior is just too much. It's not your job to hide things from us, and that is exactly what was done with that agenda. I want to make sure every county resident knows that their taxes will be going up to pay for this jail expansion that may not even be needed. The mountaineer reported that we haven't hit capacity at the current facility in the past year, so we haven't had to send any of our prisoners to another jail in quite a while. Finally, you need to look at the economy. If we have another four years of Bidenomics, the price of materials is going to continue to increase while our citizens struggle ever more to afford the basics needed to survive. If we get a new president who knows how to fix our economy, the price of materials will go down, and if the prison expansion is needed in the future, the costs may be much more reasonable, and at the same time, our citizens will be in a better financial circumstance and able to withstand a tax increase, albeit a smaller one if it's needed at all. In conclusion, please rethink this expensive and possibly unnecessary project until our economy is better and our citizens won't be as negatively impacted by it. And please make sure that your agenda reflects what you're going to be actually speaking about, so those of us that are concerned and want to be involved, you know, you say you want to hear from us, we need to know what you're talking about, and then we'll either say, no, we're not interested, or, gosh, we need to come and speak. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? State your name, where you're from.
I got my halfway, I get my halfway marker here. It'll give me a warning. I'm Casey Valentine. I am a multi-generational Appalachian person, and I wasn't going to speak, but Wilkie's prayer kind of resonated a little bit. I've been coming here a lot for several years as a community health worker, and I was really loud about the jail expansion at first. I still think it's a little excessive, but over the past couple of years, with working at state and federal level and talking to people that are security guards or sheriffs or people that even do inmate advocacy, said that larger spaces are safer. And so that was why I quieted down. I also want to commend several people in the county, Wilkie included, the Department of Health, all of the nonprofits and churches that have come together, because when we started talking about this several years ago, we were so close to capacity or we were over capacity. And when those groups realize, the preventionists and the harm reductionists and the medical providers realize that elected officials are going to do what elected officials do, we have a social responsibility to make sure that we're taking care of our community. And when those pods started working together, we had really high projection rates at the peak of COVID that we were going to have all these overdoses and we were going to have all these suicides. And it has been tragic. Everybody in the community has been touched by either COVID or drugs. And so, but those numbers are not as high as they were projected, and we have the data now about what works and what doesn't work. I would hope that if we're going to spend so many million dollars on this project, that we will look at ways to spend money to put back in the community. And just to clear something up, I don't want masters and slaves again, and I've worked with a lot of inmates. It's not as five-star as you think. They do have it better in some of our western region jails and prisons than they do elsewhere, but it's not, it's not five-star. But I'm just, always just here to remind you that for every dollar you spend on big things like this, we've got to open up dollars to the community, too. I hope that you didn't feel bullied in this. It seems like there's a big collective of people that work on it. I know that one of the county commissioners, your microphones were on when people were coming in, and one of y'all said they're piling in here like we're giving away free hot dogs, and I just want to say thank God for that. I love that. I love living in a county where we have resources, and even the people that have argued with me for years over certain things will still stand up for what they believe. We just have to make sure that people have access to the same rights and care. And as long as y'all do that, we're good.
Okay, I think I'll close the public comment session. We'll move to constituent concerns. I want to announce that there will be a public hearing during the regular meeting on April 1st at 9:00 AM to consider a proposed economic development agreement with Premier Magnesia, which is the former Giles Chemical, to approve the award of incentives for economic development purposes by helping stimulate the local economy, provide new taxable capital investment, and maintain jobs. The full details will be published in the public hearing notice that will be on the county website starting this Wednesday, March 20th, which is the same day that it will appear in the legal notices of the mountaineer. And then also, I want to mention that the Haywood County Solid Waste Department will be holding a spring household hazardous waste collection event on Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Materials Recovery Facility located at 278 Recycle Road in Clyde. During this event, Haywood County residents are encouraged to drop off household pollutants free of charge. Haywood County has partnered with Solid Waste Consolidated Waste Services and Echo Flow, who will have representatives on hand to collect the non-pesticide. Details about everything that can be taken that day will be on the county website. I think they take paint was one of the things, I believe, so. Is there, is there anything else, Amy?
So the full list is attached to your notes there.
Okay. I might read those. Okay, you can, I did this the last time, it was pretty good, had a bunch of paint. Okay, you can drop off aerosols, mixed solvents, mercury, and articles, pesticide solids, acid cleaners, PCB ballast, paint-related material, lab packs, latex paint, lead-acid batteries, alkaline batteries, NiCad batteries, lithium batteries, propane, grill and camp size, and fluorescent bulbs, oil filters, fire extinguishers, motor oil, kerosene, diesel fuel, transmission fluid, and hydraulic oil. Medications and pharmaceuticals can be disposed of year-round at the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. Please contact them for their schedule. And this event is for Haywood County residents. Please don't bring or drop off items before the event. Early drop-offs could incur fees and fines. Okay, so that's always a popular event to go. Okay, does anyone have any constituent concerns? Okay, does anyone have any constituent concerns that they want to address at this time?
Say something, if it's all right.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to talk about a couple of things. I'm the lone one that voted against the jail last time, and I was, article put in the Smoke 'Em Out News that I voted against public safety, and, but that's not true. I voted because I didn't feel like this was the right time with that amount of money, with us, with other projects coming up, and I was elected to look after the people's tax money and stuff, and that, that's what I'm going to do. In the paper, it says, they have, as usual, they always have to add articles in there because I had that tax payment plan. I've got all my receipts for the last 10 years right here, anybody that would like to see them, I just, I don't need to show them to anybody, but I'd like to, just to show that who's telling the truth, you know, and we're going to have a couple of meetings in the next few weeks, I'm going to invite a lot of people, too, and just to explain some of this stuff and show, the guy that does this, as far as I know, has never paid a tax in Haywood County, and he came here in 2016. And another thing on the, it says, "A few weeks ago, we had a vote on the school resource officers, and that required a tax increase." And he says in here that I voted against public safety. I voted for that, and I thought it was a good idea. We put resource officers in the schools. But I, I just, the only reason I'm saying this, because I keep getting, he's, he's put an article in there, it says it's bad if I do vote for something for public safety raises taxes, but then when I don't, I'm bad just opposite. So I just wanted people to know that, and I've got all my tax receipts that I will show at the meetings when we have these meetings in the next few weeks. But as far as the jail, there's, you know, there's, a lot of people hear a lot of stuff, and I've been getting, everywhere I go, I've been hearing people talk about, you know, and they stop me and ask me questions about it, and I've tried to answer the questions the best I can, and I always will. And if I can't get answered, I'll get ahold of Bryant, or Kevin, or somebody that does know the answer. But tonight, when it comes up, I have asked Bryant, I would like for him to explain this so everybody's on the same page. If everybody hears the whole details about everything, then there's no question. And that way, we'll see who, you know, you think who votes right, who votes wrong, whatever, and that way you can confront us and tell us you don't like the way we voted, or something like that. And I welcome anybody to call me anytime when they've got a, you know, if they don't think I'm doing right, I want them to let me know. I got voted to look for people's taxes and stuff, and that's what I'm going to do. And I'm sure that's what everybody else is going to do, and I don't think anybody would have a problem with anybody calling them at any time. That, I said I was going to be transparent when I got elected, and that's what I'm going to do. And I'm not going to let nobody, that just because they want to continuously harass me over and over and over with little old silly things in the, in the little old tabloid newspaper, that's not going to change. I'm, I'm just wanting everybody to know that I'm, I'm here for the people, and that's what I'm going to be here for. And I did vote, though, against the jail, because I'm not going to lie, if, if the statistics had showed me that we were hauling people to other jails, that, and, with, as with 40 beds short, that's one, the only reason. I'm not looking at for, that, voting against public safety, I'm voting against that I think that it's the wrong time. And, you know, I may be wrong for thinking that, but that's my way of thinking, and I'm not, you know, I wouldn't change it. Tonight is not a vote for the jail or not a jail. Tonight is a vote to, to award the contract to Van Oy. And, and that being said, it's bad, I feel like it's my duty, once it's been voted in, which has been voted in, I feel like it's my duty to make sure we do have somebody that builds a jail, that's built several jails, that knows what they're doing. And that's the reason I want everybody to know it, that I'm still, I'm not voting against public safety, I'm voting for somebody, you know, to make sure we got somebody that knows what's going on, and will do a quality job building the jail and stuff. And if anybody has any questions or anything, feel free to call me anytime. But like I said, we'll be having a couple of meetings, and I'd like for people to come and ask me any question they want to. Thank you.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just mention, I'll go over this other stuff when we get to the agenda item about the jail, but I did want to make a comment that, well, we did have a public hearing about this several meetings ago, and, you know, for you to say that, Ms. Presson, for you to say that we were trying to hide something, Tommy's going to go over that here in a little while, so you'll, you'll see that, that we're not hiding anything. We never hide anything. This is the most transparent board. I always get comments on how transparent we are. So, so that is, that is really not, not true. So, and then also, I'll just move on to budget planning. We'll go to the administrative agency reports. Go ahead, Bryant, with the budget planning session. County Manager Bryant Moorhead.
Can I interrupt for, they're taking a day to the hospital. I need to leave.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to say something here, Bryant. I wanted to mention that Commissioner Rogers couldn't be here tonight because he is in, was on a formerly planned family vacation, and then Jennifer is having to leave because of a, a, a health emergency in his, in her family, so. We'll be praying for you, Jennifer. Okay, go ahead, Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is really a high-level discussion about the, the things that you'll see moving forward with the, the budget process. So if there's some questions you have as we review this PowerPoint, please stop me, and we, we can talk about it. We started the budget meetings with departments several weeks ago. Week before last, we finished those up. Either myself, Chris Boyd, Will Scarborough, or Don Ramsey sat in on all those meetings, had a good conversation about the needs, what's driving the department's workload, those kinds of things. So I'll walk through some of this and kind of give you an idea of what we're facing for the upcoming FY25 budget. Last year, we ended in really good position. Revenues outpaced expenditures of about $8.9 million. This was great. To say that we added almost $9 million to fund balance was, was, was really an opportune time. You can see, generally, fund balance shot up, and I believe when the auditor was standing at the podium, he said, "That's not unique to Haywood County." A lot of counties had increased their fund balance thresholds largely as a result of receiving recovery funds. So we're in no, no different shape. You can see we're at 49.4% all the way back to 2006. Looks like Haywood County is, is stronger financially than we've, we've been in at least probably 20 years, if, if not ever. As you know, we were going through the, the bond market for the, the jail expansion, and we had ratings by S&amp;P, and they assigned an issuer credit rating, double A+, this is one notch below triple A, which is the highest rated that they offer. Because the, the, the structure of the debt for the jail is limited obligation bonds, everybody's always one notch lower. So instead of double A+, we will be double A for the lobs, limited obligation bonds. And this is a comment from S&amp;P, I think everyone probably received the press release that Dylan helped push out. It reflects the view of the county's growing into diverse economy, prudent management practices, long history of positive operating results, and manageable long-term liabilities that we will expect will persist given capital needs. And this was in light of them approving or rating the county based on the, the jail As they said, the long-term liabilities, that's, think of debt, and you can see, our, this is our total debt, this is the county's, the schools, and the college debt, and this is our yearly payments, and you can see it's, it's very manageable. The LGC in North Carolina controls the debt structure. Typically, it's 20-year debt level principal payments. That's what the limited obligation bonds were for the, the jail. And you can see, this is the, the debt prior to issuing the debt for the, the jail. When you back out the schools and the college, this is the debt profile of the county. You can see we had yearly debt payments of just a little over $1,007,000. And now with the, the jail expansion, you can see it's still roughly the same trend because of the structure, it's just that for the next 20 years, it's increased. You can see this year is 1.7, and in '26, we get a full year of principal and interest, and that's the high-water mark, and it starts coming down. Any questions specifically about that? Okay, I think you've seen those estimates numerous times throughout this whole process and, and what the, the debt profile will look like, and that has to be approved by the LGC, an independent commission headed by Secretary Falwell. Actually, Christian, Chris and I were on the call, Secretary Falwell was there as, as, as they approved the debt earlier this month. Just kind of an idea of general fund expenditures, you can see we're at about $100.1 million in our general fund this year. Give you some perspective, about $55 million of that comes from property tax revenue. You can see current year's budget, FY24, we're at $55.1 million. As the time this report was put together, we brought in $51.3 million. Our trend is that we're slightly ahead of where we would expect, and hopefully about $600,000 over the adopted budget number by the time we get to 630, 2024. 1% is not that much. When you start thinking about $55 million to beat the projection by only $600,000, that's really, really close. But I'm glad our trend's there. Sales tax is another big portion of our property tax. This is just the last three years of sales tax, so you can kind of see FY22 was outlier, '23 and '24 are really close. This number looks different if I was to run the report. Sales tax in North Carolina is slowing down. For instance, in '19, growth in '19 to '20 was 7.7%, '20 to '21 was 19%, '21 to '22, 9.9%, '22 to '23 was 7.5%. Right now, we're looking at about 2.8% growth. So higher interest rates, things are costing more, we're seeing that, that sales tax numbers go back to what I would consider normal, actually, back to prior COVID, probably more of a trend that you would see in, you know, the earlier part of '15 and '16 and like. Just to give you some, some numbers so you know what you're looking at, you, you can see that's the trend. Generally, positive sales tax, we're probably projecting about 2.5% growth next year, just based on the most recent trends. End-of-year projection has us beating budget by about $500,000. The things that, that we're seeing for the upcoming year, of course, jail debt, as I said, that we'll have an interest-only payment in FY25. Once '26 gets here and construction's about to wrap up, we will have a full year of principal and interest payments. But other things that are driving the budget outlook, capital planning and replacement, I don't have to tell you, everything that we do is costing more money. IT equipment, for instance, we have some data room cooling systems that we, we need. They not just keep the air hot or cold, they dehumidify it, or humidify it, they, they just keep the servers and storage safe. You may remember we use some of our recovery funds to, to buy new storage. I don't want to say storage, it's not file cabinet, this is data storage, and servers. And now we need about $225,000 worth of equipment to make sure that those do not wear out earlier than their useful life. We've got elevator maintenance that we really need to, to worry about in the parking deck. Those elevators are, are about 20 years old, it's getting hard to find parts, if not almost impossible. Those two elevators to replace are, are $550,000. In outlying years, we have the same elevators at the Justice Center, we'll have several of those that will be in need to replace in, in following years. Library, the roof at the library, I've shared with you some, some pictures of, of, of the roof system that has to be replaced, need about $120,000 there. So those kinds of things, just to maintain what we have, is getting more expensive, but you have almost 800,000 square feet under roof, it takes a lot of, of time and effort and money to, to keep those things maintained adequately. The state retirement system raised the retirement rate again from 12.85 to 13.6, and sworn law enforcement from 14.10 to 15.10. That's an increase that we just have to, to, to eat from the state. Employee compensation, current year, we actually did 4% COLA, 2% merit, so most employees would receive about 6%. We were kind of tying that to last year's Consumer Price Index. This year, the CPI is about 3.7, so tentatively, we put in a 3% COLA and a 2% merit, 5%, and that's about $2.2 million total. Keep in mind, each percent is roughly $440,000 when we, per year. Health insurance, a bit of good news, even though it's, 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 it's really expensive. Our health insurance is going up only $500 per employee per year. We've, we've been about $1,000 per employee per year. That's a little over 2.5% increase. The national average for healthcare cost is up 4.1%. So we're well below the 4.1 by the, at the national level. So the increase of $703,000 for health insurance, if, if it was at the national average, would be an additional $423,000. So I'm really glad that our healthcare costs aren't rising nearly as much as that, and that saves almost half a million dollars. I'm sorry.
How much was that, how much would that be on our part?
Yeah, so we, we've, we've got in a 2.5, 2.56% increase for $703,000. The national, US healthcare is up 4.1%. So if, if we were at the national level, it would cost us another $423,000. Fleet management, we, we have about 195 vehicles, just keeping those on the road and operable. This board has bought a lot of vehicles in the last few years and really got out in, in front of the market on ambulances, and, and so just maintaining the fleet as many miles as, as our folks put on becomes a challenge. Meeting with the departments, we did have a request of about 18 new positions. EMS and emergency management was four, the sheriff six, health and human services two, the tax assessors three, IT has requested one, library one, and economic development was one. So if we were to fund all 18 positions, we would need about $1.74 million to, to fund all 18 of those positions. Vehicles, we have a total of 14 that are going to meet our replacement criteria this year, and you can see how they're broken out. Overall, we need about $855,000 for replacement of vehicles. All of these are replacements, we don't have any new vehicles, no additional vehicles to the fleet, all replacement. Outlying years, the debt for the jail, as we, we've talked numerous times, and we've also covered jail operating costs. Remember, this is a two-year build, from the time, if this board approves the contract with Mr. Walker, this evening, it's a two-year build. And then, once we're open, it will be a phased approach, because we won't fill up all 155 new beds on, on day two, right? So it will be an incremental phase-in approach to staffing and, and things like that. We'll have more additional costs for operating, and I think somebody earlier commented about insurance, more mills, all, all the things when you're, you're moving into a new facility. The bike park is about to start in, in, in pretty, for county government, pretty soon. The armory project is, is wrapping up. I'd like to get with you guys and schedule some time for you to see the, the work that's been done out there. And then Russ Avenue, we're, we're moving right along on that EMS base as well.
In the Army, we put an EMS base there.
Moving, moving that, we're going to have opportunity for more recreation. We can share with the community college that does BLET, and at the end of the day, we didn't have a really good emergency shelter. Should snowfall happen like in '18, or widespread power outages, those kinds of things, working with the school system was, caused as many challenges as, for them as, as us. So I, I think having the drill hall available for the armory to be able to have a, a shelter should we need it, knock on wood, that it never gets used as a shelter, but it, it's, it's should we need it, knock on wood, that it never gets used as a shelter, but it's something that was needed and it's been a tough grind, but we've done that with no county funds, right? We only had about $80,000 in county money. We received state CDBG funds to, so it does a couple of things. It gives us the shelter, it helps our response time, there's a recreation component, and we've done that with outside funds, which I think is a great outcome. Like I mentioned, increased costs for employees. We've got to keep the staff we have. We have dedicated, hard-working employees, and I think turnover, we aren't losing that many employees to pay. It's a good place to work. Remember during COVID, this board authorized a pay and classification study. We got to market right before it became an arms race, and it's really saved us. And we have another firm coming in in May to start another pay and classification study. I don't think it will nearly be as far off as the market was last time because we hadn't done one in 20 years, but it's my goal to keep us at market so we aren't losing employees and we can provide great customer service.
I think the past sheriff and then the current sheriff both have said that the pay has really helped them keep their employees from going to other counties. So that was a, we were bleeding employees, especially in law enforcement and other, well, everywhere.
Everywhere.
And so I know they really appreciated that, so. And that's, when you have good employees and they're happy, you basically have better services and, you know, it doesn't cost you as much, really.
Talented people know their value more now than they ever have, and we want to keep those hard-working, talented folks, and there's a cost to it. Service demands, that's in there. A month ago, you took action to staff two basic life-saving ambulances for engine care. We're having just tons of increase for our services, and that's not going to stop as we continue to grow. And I mentioned maintenance for existing facilities. Our goal is to maintain what we have, keep everything operational, roofs from leaking, you know, asphalt and good repair, those kinds of things, just very expensive. I know that was really a kind of a generic view. We have a lot of work to do, and I want you to see these dates. Really, the next meeting is the only one that we don't have a lot of budget discussion on the May or April 15th meeting. Both community college and the school system will be here to present to you their requests for FY '25. On May 6th, it's about two weeks earlier than in prior years, I hope to present the budget to you guys, and we'll have a public hearing at the regular meeting on the 20th, and then hopefully on June 3rd, we can adopt the budget. And we have June 17th as a fallback date if we need to add work sessions or anything else about, at the budget at that time. Any questions?
I missed a couple of them right there. On that state retirement, do you have what that one is?
I don't have the total dollar amount in front of me, but each percent, if it's COLA, merit, or it's a retirement, is about $440,000.
Each percent?
It's not insignificant on what that, basically, 1% is costing on both of those.
That was mandated from the state.
It is, it is.
Another state mandate.
Have a counsel on that employee compensation?
$2.2 million. That will do 5% for the full year. Yes, sir.
And so these dates that you put on the overhead projector for everyone's benefit, we're going to have four more meetings before we adopt the budget, and we'll have a public hearing before we vote to adopt it or turn it down on May 20th. But also, generally, since I've been on the board, you've been very good about calling us in individually. I know last year, I went down through the budget line item by line item with you and Will individually before we, that's beside these dates on overhead, so you're still planning on doing that?
Between 4/15 and 5/6, I'd like to meet individually with you, review the budget in depth, take a couple of hours and we comb through it. Yes, sir.
So this is a preliminary icebreaker, and then we're going to have four more meetings and we can slice it, dice it. But you know, on the employee request, are any of those to replace projected retirees? Or are those additional to the current staff levels?
Those are additional staff.
Additional, that's the request.
Yes.
One comment on the National Guard Armory, just for folks' benefit that's in the audience. North Carolina National Guard Army, I had friends who worked out of that building. It's a great building, and when they decided to dissolve that unit, it was in the deed that that would revert back to Haywood County, so, and I guess that went back to the '60s, '70s, somewhere when that building was built. So it was a great asset, you know, somebody had some foresight when they did that. So we got that building, which would, it's a tremendous building, and then, as you stated, we got some of those CBDG grants to do the lead abatement where they were doing rifle and pistol training in there. There was some residue left over, and we had to get that abated, and some of those funds, you know, went toward that, and so that was really great.
It was, the lead abatement was really interesting, and down in the weeds, we had to test, right? You test the thresholds of the lead because there's a threshold that you can't exceed, and there's even a more strict threshold if you're going to house minors. And knowing that it would be an emergency shelter and likely children might have to stay in there with their parents at some point, we had to get it at a very, very low level, and it passed that. So it was a lot of work. David spent a lot of time, Tim Sisk had a full head of hair before we started this project.
And so those emergency shelters, those come on you at a moment's notice. I know since I've been sitting as the commissioner, we've had I-40 shut down a few times, and we had some high-wind events and power outages where we've had to scramble to try to get tourists and people off the road and get them somewhere housed for several hours, maybe a couple of days, so that's going to be a great benefit to us.
And usually, I guess, Ira, you're in charge of that, aren't you, Ira? I'm in charge of that whenever we have to set up a shelter for the emergency situations? Yeah, I think we've had, we've done that a few times over the years, seems like, so.
You never want to open the shelter, and it's, that's what the public needs, and it's, hopefully, like I said, it's just used as a drill hall and we can, you know, watch BLET being used, or something like that in there, and we don't need it, but it will be ready should we need it.
I appreciate you getting out in front of this, Brian, that we've got four more meetings plus individual meetings to review this, so thank you for presenting this today. We'll get ahead of it.
Glad, yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item will be the National Library Week presentation, and we have our library director, Kathy Vosler, and community engagement librarian, Zachary Jones, to present that.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to provide a short update about library implementations and accomplishments and to share what we have planned for National Library Week taking place April 7 through 13. The library's vision is to enrich and transform lives with community-focused collections, programs, and services. I would like to recognize the hard work and contributions of the library's 27 staff, 16 full-time and nine part-time individuals who make all of this possible. In addition to circulating many different types of materials and offering many programs of interest to Haywood County cardholders, we have expanded and added several new services, such as the pop-up craft station pictured here, where the public were invited to make their own bookmark from pre-cut cards and rubber stamps. For the past several years, we have provided passes at no cost to cardholders to visit the Western North Carolina Nature Center in Asheville, and this year, we added passes also at no cost to our cardholders to visit the North Carolina Arboretum in Asheville, also pictured here. We refer to this pass program as our Zoom Pass, a moniker used by library systems statewide. I'd like to thank our friends of the library for supporting this program and many others. I mentioned our passive programs earlier, which give the public additional opportunities to engage and participate in programs on their own time. These include guessing game contests, working on a community puzzle, getting creative, and providing feedback about library services, programs, and collections. We've been so pleased to relaunch our Instagram page this year, allowing the library to reach a younger demographic on social media and providing us with an opportunity to showcase in photos what is happening at the libraries. Pictured here is our seed library at the Canton Branch, our recent designation as a family place library, the first in North Carolina, our new resource sharing van pictured in front of the Haywood Locker at Lakeside Plaza, both purchased with federal grant funds, and our newest literacy walk at the Canton Recreation Park, also the result of federal grant funds and the Crusoe Foundation. I'd also like to recognize the Library Foundation and Region A Partnership for Children who helped us establish the Family Place Libraries program at the Canton Branch. Looking at a few statistics for the first half of fiscal year '24, the library has circulated over 90,000 books, over 25,000 audio materials, over 46,000 digital materials, and we've offered 357 programs for all ages, July through January. Additionally, we've registered nearly 900 new cardholders in Haywood County. Now, I'd like to recognize Zachary Jones, our community engagement librarian, who will tell you all about National Library Week.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to promote our fantastic libraries and our services. As Kathy mentioned, my name is Zachary Jones, and I am the community engagement librarian here in Haywood County. This year, National Library Week takes place April 7 through the 13th. This is a week full of programming to celebrate the benefits our library offers the citizens of Haywood County. The library is one of the few remaining third places, which is a place where people can gather amongst their friends and neighbors outside of the house or work to connect and grow with the expectation of no cost. Our programs during National Library Week reflect this idea. The week kicks off on Sunday in Canton with a performance of traditional ballads and stories by an eighth-generation singer from the mountains of Western North Carolina. On Monday in Waynesville, we have our Little Librarians program, which is an opportunity for preschool and elementary-age children to get an introduction to the public library and see all of the things that we have to offer. On Tuesday of that week, the community can gather for a special showing of a movie highlighting the importance, an institution such as the public library has, on a community. Book clubs, creative writing groups for adults, as well as storytime sessions for kids, will be held all week long so that all ages can celebrate their joy and love of reading. In addition to these great programs, staff at the Canton and Waynesville branches will be offering sessions on gardening, food science, and healthy living. This year, we're offering over 15 programs during our National Library Week, which allow our community to come together and share its experiences to deepen their knowledge and their love of our libraries. While you don't need a library card to actually attend a program, we do encourage everyone to come out during National Library Week to apply for a card. Cards are of no cost to an individual, but they do open up a wealth of opportunities. Again, this year's National Library Week is April 7 through the 13th, and we hope to see you there. For updates on all the things that we have going on at the library, you can follow us on Facebook. We are on there at Haywood Library, Haywood County Library, and on our Instagram, which is HaywoodLibrary828. Thank you so much.
Have anything else, Kathy?
No.
Okay.
That's it.
Let me just say that, you know, a lot of times when we interview people for the library board, they're always impressed with the library and talk about how well it's run and how good it is for, that our community has a library of that quality for our community. And I remember, they were talking, I think, I think the library, Haywood County Library originally started maybe right here in Waynesville, maybe, in a little building, and then it expanded on, and maybe that was in the '20s, and you might know, but anyway, they did that one time, and you could tell that there were some folks at that time that had a, I guess, a vision for the library system here in Haywood County, and then I know they would be proud of it today to see what it's grown into, so. And people use it for so much, you know, you don't think people need a library because of the internet, but they come there because they don't have internet, you know, they come there to use that, so.
Yes, and we're still circulating a lot of books. Contrary to popular belief, people still like to read books.
That's right, yeah, that's right. Exactly right.
No, I just want to thank Kathy for coming to our meetings. She's a department head over our library system, and since I've been a sitting commissioner, you probably made 80 or 90% of the meetings, and I appreciate you coming to the meetings. The public library, I can remember when I was going to school, I came from a family of five, and sometimes it's pretty noisy around my house, and so when I had a big project deadline at school, I would actually drive over here to this public library in Waynesville and get in the back corner back there on a Saturday and just stay there all day where it was quiet and could study. So I know a lot of people are utilizing it for that purpose as well, so.
Yes.
Just thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next, our next item is the announcement of new Haywood County employees. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have quite a list. In facilities, Catherine Fuller. At the library, they've been very busy hiring. We have Collins Stigelbauer, Abby Purpich, Sean Harrington, and Olivia Shaw. At HHSA, we have Michelle Moss, Audra Blazer, Sarah Woody, and we have some social workers, and I think you'll be recognizing social workers at the end of the meeting, Kane Teague, Savannah Woolard, and Katie Strong. We also have Richard Pronto, Elizabeth Flag, who is our new recreation director, and Amanda West, who's a telecommunicator. That's my list. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Your next order of business will be constituent, I mean, a discussion adjustment to the agenda. I do not have anything. Does any other commissioner have anything? Okay, so next is the consent agenda. Does any commissioners have any questions on the nine items on the consent agenda?
On the radios, is that the ones that we talked about in the meeting before this for the rescue squadron, for the new ambulances?
You're talking about number nine? Go ahead.
Those are actually for the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. Number nine is related to what you would think is 911 consoles.
That was a, that grant came for that specific purpose, right?
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion when we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. So we'll move to the regular agenda. Number one is to request approval of a proclamation recognizing March 2024 as Social Work Month in Haywood County. We have our Health and Human Services Director, Ira Dev, to speak to that, and Gaila Jones.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for having us here this evening. Going to be asking you to do a proclamation recognizing March as a social worker month. Have with us here tonight some of the leadership from the social work. We have our social work director with me, Gaila Jones, and in the back there, we have We have our social work director with me, Gaila Jones, and in the back there, we have a couple of our program managers. We have Pam Montgomery, who's our Child Welfare Program Manager, and Shannon Bradshaw, our Adult Protective Services Program Manager, and Melissa Switzer, who's a supervisor for y'all. And before I get to the proclamation, I was just sitting there just in my head doing a little math, and between us, you know, when I came in 2000, 24 years ago, Pam and Shannon were already working for y'all. And Gaila came around the same time, and Melissa joined us in 2011. So we have over 100 years of experience just in this room, making the decisions to help protect your community. That's 100 years of folks who I know and have had the honor to work with that spend their weekends on a call, will spend their holidays away from home, will walk into homes that some people don't even realize exist in Haywood County and conditions, do anything to protect adults and children in our community. So you have a lot of great people who work with us. You know, we have a lot of support from the county. We've worked tremendously with the Sheriff's Office and the other law enforcement entities in the community, the different municipalities, the hospital, mental health entity, and the state over the years. But it starts with the people that are willing to go out and look at those families and help the people in your community. So I'm very grateful for the people I work with and that we can stand here, and we have like a great legal team that supports us as well. To ask you to recognize this, because we're talking about social work as a profession of dedicated and helping people, and I can tell you for a fact, over the last 20 years, I've witnessed that in Haywood County. They believe in enhancing the human well-being and help people meet the basic needs of all people, and particular focus on helping the vulnerable and the oppressed and those living in poverty. They follow a code of ethics. A lot of people, you know, may not know that, and they fight injustice and respect the dignity of all people. Social workers meet people where they are, and they go out into the communities. They work, the profession for more than a century has worked to improve society, and with social workers playing a role in establishing a minimum wage, Social Security, Medicare. And in your community, like I say, just really helping out, being guardians, taking care of people in any way they can. They work in all facets of society, schools, hospitals, community organizations. They work on the frontline in helping the nation solve many pressing problems. They're in high demand, and that is true. We've had to do a lot of things. We worked great with Brian and are appreciative to y'all to try and do things to help us recruit and maintain that workforce, because they are in high demand. And I can tell you, if we had in our communities more people in their professions as dedicated as they are to theirs, it would continue to make a difference. So we ask in recognition of the numerous contributions made by the social workers that you proclaim March 24 as Social Work Month. Thank you.
Do you want to read that?
I have read most of it. I've just ad-libbed some into it.
You're kind of like a preacher. That's kind of what.
Paraphrased.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. We reprove the proclamation of number one item in the regular agenda.
Aye.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I would like to say I appreciate all, you guys got a tough job, and I know from personal experience, you've got a very tough job, and I appreciate your work. I sat on a board, Juvenile Crime Prevention Board with Gaila, and she does a great job with that board and to try to help some bad situations, and I really appreciate your dedication to your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
While they're getting this photo ready, I want to share with everybody a situation that happened in Cherokee County. They had some people that weren't doing their job, and it cost that county, they had some bad operators, and I'm glad we've got good operators, but it cost that county, they were afraid that a federal judge was going to go ahead and grant them the death penalty on their property tax, which would have been $101. Ours is $0.56, but they settled $104 million lawsuit. There were some parents that these folks in Cherokee County were not, they didn't, they broke the law. And they wound up settling a class action lawsuit with several of those families, and it cost Cherokee County nine cents on their property tax rate, a nine cent hike on their property tax rate to cover that settlement with those families. So those folks, Ira, and I had a conversation with Ira about that the day I heard about it, said, "Ira, don't let this happen in Haywood County." And so they're on top of it, they're doing things by the law, the letter of the law, and just want to make sure you maintain that vigilance, because you get some bad employees, and they do something wrong, and it costs all of us. And it costs Cherokee County nine cents for the debt service, $104 million, if I remember right. You know, we're going to be talking about a jail expenditure here, tangible brick and mortar project in a few minutes, but you know, because of bad employees, it cost them nine cents on their tax rate, and it's terrible. It was terrible. That just happened right out here in Murphy.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll move on to item two of the regular agenda is to request approval of a ward of contract in the amount of $27,432,258 to Vanoy Construction for the detention center expansion project, and approval of $31,512,280 capital, and we have our capital project, I'm sorry, approval of the $31,512,280 capital project ordinance. And our county manager, Brian Morehead, go ahead, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, the contract that you have in front of you and the accompanying capital project ordinance, I don't know what questions you may have. Mr. Walker with Vanoy Construction is here. Talk through any particulars you have. Christian, myself, we can talk about the money that's in place, how it's structured, all of those things. Don't have a formal presentation. I feel like through the several meetings we've had, that the board's up to speed on this project and how we intend to pay for it, so.
Brian, if you would, would you just sort of, either Christian, either one of you wants to do it, just sort of go over it and let people know, because the calls we get, and a lot of the confusion is people don't understand what's in what part of it or whatever in other fees, because I guarantee if I leave here with $31 million, I'm going to start getting some calls.
Keep in mind, there are construction costs. When we talk about that, we're talking about the hard costs associated with construction. Then you've got some soft costs, and you've got some of the contingency funds, those kinds of things that take that number up. Christian is prepared to walk you through that, and I think she-
I believe if they just explain it to the people, so the people will know exactly what it is and what, it's just like the deal about the 62%. It's figured different, people don't understand that unless you explain it to them, and that's the reason I like to, I just, for my own, I like, I want to be able to know how to answer questions if people ask me, in other words. That way, there's nobody mad at anybody, and everybody knows ahead. And I want people to understand that this vote tonight is to vote for the contractor that's going to build the jail. The jail's already approved, but tonight what we're doing is approving the contract. If we turn this down tonight, it would have to be rebid and stuff, and it would cost a ton more. And I just want people to understand that, the reason that, Vanoy is a company that's built many, many, many jails, and they're one of the better contractors, and that's the reason I want everybody to know that I feel like that y'all would want the best contractor to build it, being it's already passed, and it's going to be built anyway, that we, it's my duty to make sure we get a decent contractor. We've got a jail up there that's 17 years old right now, and it's supposed to be in the last 20 some years, and it's not. So I hope we get, this time it'll last as long as it's supposed to last.
Okay, so you want me just to go through the ordinance and explain what makes up those numbers? Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, so everyone received a copy of the ordinance with the agenda packet. The revenues for those funds come from the proceeds of the bond sales, which is the par amount plus the premium sold on the bonds, which equals $26,512,280. The remainder will come from a state grant in the amount of $5 million. That's no cost to us, money direct from the state, which we have already received. So for the expenditure side, the capital outlay, which is the building and the site preparation, is $28,572,138. Put a pin in that number. That's the only number that I'm going to have to break down a little bit further. There is a line for professional services, which covers the insurance and bonding of the project, the full construction project of the 24-month span of $499,064. There is the C-MAR fee, which goes to Vanoy for the management of the project, which is $991,527. Professional service cost of issuance, that is the bond fees for the attorneys, the closing costs, the financial advisors, that's about $425,000. Underwriter's discount, that is the cost of the bond issuance, just the bonds for the bond underwriters, that is $88,200. And then we have a construction contingency of $475,299. So the first number that I mentioned, the $28,572,138, what is included in that number is the cost of work and general conditions, which totals $25,466,368. Also included in that number is the Mosley contract, the architect contract, $1,985,000. Soil disposal fees, $415,000, and owner's contingency of $705,770. That's a breakdown of everything that's included in the total of $31,512,280. Do you have any more specific questions on any of those line items?
On the $5 million we got from the state, that's included in this, correct? It's already been added in there?
Yes, that's under Section 4, under the revenue. So we sold bonds for $26 million, rounding and change, and then we have the $5 million from the state in the grant funds that will pay for the project. So the financing, as we call it, is only for the $26,512,280.
Right, so the $5 million came off of the $31.
Any other questions?
Oh, it's a pretty self-explanatory packet. I appreciate you putting all that together.
I tried to make it as simplistic as possible.
78 pages of it, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good reading.
Yeah. Well, every building project, and I've been a part of a lot of building projects for the last 20 years, or 25 years, I guess, in the county, and we've always, you know, we always go, methodically go through this, and then it seems like when we go to vote, particularly on the vote, everybody shows up then. And we've had, and so I think Tommy was going to go over the-
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. I want you to go over how many times we've met on this, and it's not hidden from anybody, okay?
Well, I had personally asked the county manager to give me this information, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, because I wanted everybody to know, two or three weeks ago now, I guess, is when I requested it. So I'll share this with you. We have met 16 times in this room. 16 times it's been on the agenda, starting in November the 2nd of '20, when we had the needs assessment. We voted to do that, starting back in November of '20. So we've had 16 public meetings, like the one we're having tonight, on this project. Not only did we have 16 of these meetings, but there was also some auxiliary meetings with a jail steering committee. That was with the staff, the county manager, the assistant county manager, our chairman, our vice chairman. There were other meetings that we entrust the chairman and vice chairman to sit in. A lot of auxiliary meetings went into this. So we had the 16 meetings, and I've got the dates, 11/20, March 1st, '21. We had the soil analysis approval. That was a very challenging site. We had to do some subsurface exploration with a company to make sure we knew what was down there and what we could do with that type soil. We approved that on March 24th of 2022, that's two years ago, right at it. Randall Associates and Mosley Architects, and this was a special public hearing, it was two years ago, we had a special public hearing in this courtroom, where we had two architectural firms present their abilities to design this building. So there was a long meeting. We had several people from the public show up and speak, and I appreciate that. I want to say I appreciate everybody that's concerned about this. This is the biggest vote that I have faced since I have been a sitting commissioner. So I appreciate your concern and everyone that spoke here tonight. So we had people show up two years ago, Randall Associates and Mosley Architects, butted heads here in front of all of us, made their sales pitch, and we chose Mosley because they had the cleaner design. It was a clean roof. The other architectural firm had several openings, skylights, vents, very, Tim can tell you, is extremely high maintenance design. Roofs leak, especially when you have several openings, creates some safety hazards as far as the sheriff's concerned as well. And so it was a clear choice that Mosley had the cleaner, better architectural design, and they had designed several jails. And so we went with, on 4/4, this was about 10, 11 days later, we had the regular meeting on April 4th of 2022, here in this courtroom, and the approval of Mosley Architects was voted on, it was unanimous for design and review. So we awarded them the contract. On 6/6, they went, we had that meeting on 6/6 to approve that, when they came back with the final thing, we went ahead and approved that for 1.985 million, as Christian shared with you folks just a few minutes ago. On December 5th of 2022, we had another meeting here, approval of the pre-qualification for the contractor bids per Mosley Architects. Now, we, a lot of steps into a huge project. We had to make sure that the people they were bidding on the project were capable of doing the job. We want to make sure they had the equipment, we want to make sure we had the background checks to make sure of their work, quality of work, make sure that they were capable of doing this job. We don't want somebody to show up with inadequate experience or inadequate equipment. So we had that vetting to do that. And so we did that pre-qualification, which was very extensive. I know the staff spent a lot of time on that, and contractors had to submit their qualifications. So in January of, January 17 of '23, 14 months ago, basically, Davenport and Company discussed financing options and review of county finances, again, here in a public hearing a year, 14 months ago. And they gave a very glowing report about our county finances. It was said a few minutes ago, it's a bad time to build, and I agree. I heard somebody say Biden inflation, you know, and I, not to inject politics, but everybody who runs a household, who buys diesel fuel, gas, groceries, you understand that comment, and it is reflective across the economic board. It's reflective in the construction business, materials, labor. And so Davenport discussed our options, county finances, 14 months ago. They basically said, just like our county manager presented a few moments ago, Standard and Coors gave us a double A-plus rating. That's because of physical conservatism from this board. We have one of the lowest debt profiles, it's going down, and we also, our fund balance, as he said, was probably the highest it's been in 20 years. A lot of that is money that was given by ARPA funds, some of- A lot of that is money that was given by ARPA funds, some of it's designated. But, put a feather in our legislative representative for Haywood County, Mark Pless has had. That five million that Christian mentioned that came from the state legislature was a direct result of Mark Pless's work for Haywood County. I've also lobbied him in recent days about getting some more funding. And so, he has assumed some power in the legislature. I do want to commend him for standing beside Haywood County and getting that money. I hope he can bring home some more. I, I've said it before, love Mark, hate Mark, whatever you wanna do. But Mark has brought more money back to Haywood County by accident than some of our former representatives did on purpose. And I, that, the numbers will prove that statement. And so Mark is working on that for us. Davenport, that was fourteen months ago. On February sixth, twenty-three, reimbursement resolution to allow us to pay ourselves back. It was on the agenda. We, we, it was a pay ourselves back for some expenditures we had. It was discussed then. I think Brian covered some of the, what we're gonna do in the first year if this passes. February twentieth, twenty-three, it's on the agenda, public agenda, it's printed beforehand. Required, we had a required public hearing to allow us to finance the project. That was a public hearing. That was on February twentieth, twenty-three. March twentieth, twenty-three, a year ago. A required public hearing to allow us, oh, excuse me, we rejected the single bid. Many of you know this. We sat right here. Our architect, Mosley, had projected that the project at that time was gonna be around twenty-one million. There was only one bidder, Hickory Construction, and I guess I need to apologize to them. They came back and bid it at twenty-eight point something million. They were the only bidder, and per state law, we have to have multiple bidders. But this, we could, we could have went around that, jumped through some hoops and got some approval from Raleigh, but we all decided, five-oh, to reject that bid. Was seven million dollars more than what we had been told. And so that was a sore point for a lot of people, still is. On Jan, June the fifth of twenty-three, we decided to go with the construction manager-at-risk bid procedure. That was another way to bid a project instead of an open bid. We hired a, a construction manager to, to manage all this. And there were two companies, two arco, two building construction companies. By the way, how many did you prevet? Was there five, six, five? And so this steering committee met and settled on these two as being the best. Vanoy Construction out of Asheville, and we had H.G. Reynolds. And by the way, they were from South Carolina, Greenville area. Two great presentations, two very capable constructors. You know, when, but at the end of the day, when we got right down and vetted it and split hires, we chose Vanoy. And that was on June the nineteenth, June the nineteenth. We vetted those contractors. They had the public presentation. Again, we felt like Vanoy was the best choice. February fifth, twenty-four, we had a public hearing on proposed financing. On February fifth, again, it's a public hearing for proposed financing. I think Davenport recommended that we go ahead and do that again, since it had been so long since we had the first one. Authorized, on February nineteenth, we authorized county staff to negotiate with, I guess, go with the league of governments and negotiate with lending institutions on rates. During that meeting, public meeting, we all sat here and discussed having a public hearing. It was announced, we said it right here, all five of us, we said, well, what's your schedule? Can you meet on such-and-such day, such-and-such time? And so we all agreed here, and it was advertised, to meet on December the twenty-sixth over at the DHHS conference room. Excuse me? Uh, excuse me, Fe, February twenty-sixth. Yeah, February twenty-sixth. Thank you, Amy. February twenty-sixth, we had a public hearing, and sadly, there was no people from the public showed up. That was the moment when we could've had a back-and-forth, address questions. We had two representatives from news media show up. But we had a very productive meeting, lasted about two hours, and it was very informal, very informal. We could've had a nice conversation, but, and we still did, we still did. We had the contractor, we had the architect, we had the sheriff's department, we had the chief deputy, we had finance director, we had manager. You know, we had everybody at the table, and it was a very productive meeting. I will say, out of that meeting, there was two things that came, and everybody here needs to understand this. There was two things that stuck out to me. First of all, we were informed by Vanoy because of the site restrictions. We discussed chopping the project in half. We had two-hour discussion, I guess it was two hours. What do we do if we cut it in half? Well, the thing, the deal breaker for me was, first of all, you cut the project in half, you don't cut the cost per square foot in half. Actually, you're shooting yourself in the foot. It's kinda like putting a basement under a house. That's the cheapest building space you can have. Cut the project in half, but the cost per foot would've went up. Not only that, and here's, here's the deal breaker for me. The site itself poses so many problems that if we cut it in half, it would've tied the hands of any future commissioner board from expanding on that particular property because of the restrictions of the site. If you guys just have to see this, it's, it's a very cumbersome site, but it's right next to the current jail. It makes perfect sense to stay there. And so, we had a great discussion. That, that was kind of a, that was kind of a deal breaker, I mean, a deal maker for me, tying the hands of the future. In, March the fourth, we authorized our staff to go for the financing, which, has that been discussed yet? The, the rates that we got back from the league of government, has that been brought up?
Maybe, maybe just in passing.
Well, I know it was brought up in the last meeting, but has it been brought up tonight? Could you tell us the great news we got from our bond?
And, and as, as you're touching on it, we, we went to the bond market. The, the, originally, we, the, the rates between what, the public sale and the private placement, if just getting a bank loan, the rates were so close that we, it wasn't worth the added cost of, of going to the public sale. So, but since enough time had, had elapsed, when we were getting ready to, to, to look at this, again, the, the rates were in our benefit to go through the public sale, and that's what we did. And I, I think it was three-point-five-one, maybe, they're, they're super accurate. I think it's three-five-one-six, or something like that. And it actually beat the rate that we had through the, the, the private placement with Truist, basically, a year earlier. I, I don't have that number right in front of me, but the interest rate, I mean, I, I think there would be a lot of buyers out there clamoring for a, a twenty-year fixed-rate home loan at three-point-five-one percent right now. I, I think that speaks volumes of the credit-worthiness of, of Haywood County and, and the economy.
Right, and I, I, I just wanted you to say that. I knew we had a, had that from last, last meeting. Some of those words from Standard and Poor's, double-A-plus, if you saw the overhead projections, it was because we have prudent management policies and positive operating results. Now, those are their words, not us. Those were the people that rated us. And so, that speaks volumes to, to the financing part of it. It's a great rate. But today, that brings us up to today. That's, I think I've covered sixteen, actually eighteen meetings can, oh, the jail tour. That was on two-sixteen. We, we got invited by the sheriff to do a jail tour, and I, I don't know if some of the folks are still here. I can assure you, you know, it's, it's no Taj Mahal. I mean, I can assure you. I wish all high school kids and junior high school kids could take a jail tour. There was a program called Scared Straight several years ago. I, I can tell you, it's no Taj Mahal. I walked through that thing, and I thought, this is no place for me, no place for anybody. It's built by state codes, state regulations, and it's bare bones. And it's, it's certainly no Taj Mahal. So we did a jail tour, if those, some of us have been up there before, but it, it was vi, it was very eye-opening. I wanna say a few more things, and, and I'm gonna yield back. I can assure you, this didn't fall out of the sky last week on this commissioner board. It didn't fall off the cabbie's truck last week. We've been at this for three years. It was talked about when I was first elected in twenty-eighteen. And so, this just didn't fall out of the sky like a meteorite. It's been vetted. I think all the commissioners, all our staff is, listen, I've lost sleep over this thing. It's, it's, it's consumed us for several years. So I can assure you, this, this is not something that's just a spur-of-the-moment decision. I wanna, I wanna share with you something. A local news organization printed something on Sheriff Christopher. This was in September of twenty-two, when we were looking at a new sheriff. I think Larry Bryson and Bill Wilkie were running, and there was an article about the election. I'm gonna quote it. It says, "Pathways couldn't ameliorate the need for a new jail expansion project that wasn't exactly welcomed in all parts of the community. But Sheriff Christer, Christopher was still able to shepherd the project to the finish line." I've personally talked to three former sheriffs. I haven't talked to Mr. Suddles. But Sheriff Alexander told me that he asked for three hundred beds fourteen, fifteen years ago. He, he asked for three hundred beds, and because of the economy at the time, the commissioners had to chop his legs off Monday and give him a hundred and eight. And I promise you, all of us would be really happy to be sitting at home right now, eating supper, because the meeting would be over, and we wouldn't be having this discussion if, you know, if it had been built correctly to that level fourteen or fifteen years ago. So Sheriff Alexander said, and I think Commissioner Ennis said, he was the only one for it. But, he's for this current jail project, I ask him. Sheriff Christopher, to his credit, he saved the taxpayers, Haywood County, bukooz them money by all kinds of creative recidivism techniques and things, but he can only kick the can down the road so long, and it, it's caught up with us. And so, Sheriff Christopher's for this project. He shepherded it through. A current sheriff, Bill Wilkie. I wanna thank Bill Wilkie, the job he's doing. I know he don't wanna toot his own horn a whole lot, but I wanna tell you, here's, here's what we have in the sheriff. He spent four years in Newport News as a police officer. He has a degree in psychology. He's the president of the North Carolina Association of Private Investigators. Was. He had to give it up. He had too many, too many irons in the fire. But he, he's the past president of the Association of Private Investigators. He was a Asheville police officer for sixteen years. He retired from the North Carolina Army National Guard as a colonel, and he spent many years as an MP training off, training officer with the North Carolina National Guard. Thank you for your service, sir. What I'm trying to say here, and former sheriff Christopher also retired United States Army National Guard, many years in the highway patrol. We're not talking about novice people here who don't know anything about sheriffing or jailing. And as a public servant, I lean heavily upon the experts. And this fellow's credentials and the previous one's credentials speak volumes to me. Sheriff Wilkie's for this expansion. I hate to inject politics, but sometimes people like to do that. These folks are from different political parties. You know, crime is a bipartisan, bipartisan affair. Public safety. I ran on public safety. I am quoted, right here in a mountaineer forum, in September of twenty-two. I said, quote, "I'm not going to play politics with public safety." You get elected as a commissioner, these decisions come down the pipeline. It's like, ready or not, here we come. Ready or not, here we come. Here comes this jail project. It's been stalled off, kicked down the road. Here it is. That's why we're elected. These decisions come. I went on to say, in that public forum, if you were here, sharing with you the problems over in Buncombe County. At that time, their alderman had defunded the police. Now, they said they re-appropriated funds. The facts is, they took two-hundred-and-seventy-some thousand dollars out of the shit, of the police department's budget. Subsequently, they lost nearly eighty employees. They were down at that time forty. And I see the sheriff shaking his head. He knows that. He had some friends over there. At that moment in time, when I said that, they were down forty officers, and in the paper in Buncombe County, they printed that the sheriff, the, excuse me, the police chief, said they would not respond to certain calls after ten PM in the city. You're on your own. Basically, they said, "The citizens, you're on your own." I said publicly, "I'm not gonna play politics with public safety. I support the EMS, I support, support the sheriff's department. I don't like this runaway inflation. Gives me the heartburn every time I fill my truck up. That's where we are. But I'm not gonna play politics with it. None of the former sheriffs have. Comes from two political parties, and they, they both, all three of them, that I talked to, sit there for it." And so, I've heard some people say, I've heard some people say, "I support, I support public safety. I support the boys in blue. I support the jail. I just don't wanna pay for it." I've heard that. I'm a needs-based guy, and, you know, every, they can't print everything in the paper that's said, but these guys will attest to what was said up at that public hearing that everybody was invited to. I said this, public meeting, it's a public meeting, excuse me, public meeting. I'm a needs-based person. I'm pretty tight. I don't like to buy shoes unless my toes are hanging out the ends of them. I hadn't bought a pair of boots in about three or four years. You talk about sticker shop. But my toes were hanging out. I needed to buy some boots. About twice what I paid for the last pair I bought. I take care of them. I put mink oil on them. Sticker shop. I, I don't like that. Our financial report, our vetting, that I have shown you, sixteen, sixteen meetings. Just didn't fall out of the sky. I think our commissioners are as conservative as you can get. We have the seventeenth-lowest tax rate in state North Carolina. There's eighty-three counties that pay a higher tax rate than Haywood County, and we're still in great financial shape. So I'm gonna, if this passes, I'm gonna continue to lobby Mr. Pless. Those are stacked state tax dollars that we've all paid into the system. We pay state income tax. If we don't get it, it'll go to Mecklenburg, it'll go to Wake County, it'll go to Orange County, it'll go to Brunswick, it'll go somewhere. And so I'm glad we have somebody fighting for that in Raleigh. And I, I think he's, I think he'll be successful. I'm hoping he is. But that'll lighten my load as well. The other takeaway from that public hearing, that there was nobody there. The sheriff and his department stated publicly, right now, their hands are tied. By the way, that day, they were down on jail population because they'd had a superior court session just that day and the day before, and a lot of them got shipped off to state prison or released. We were back to full capacity about three or four days ago, a hundred and eight, back to full capacity. I don't know what it is right now, but I, I got an email. We got, it's full capacity. Here's what the takeaway for me was. Right now, we're handicapping our sheriff's department from doing these huge drug stings, or huge DUI sting across the county. Why? They got nowhere to put them. They got all twenty-twenty-five in, and the jail's full. It's kind of a deterrent. It, you know, what are we gonna do with them when we catch them? That was a takeaway. Another takeaway was, at eighty percent capacity, it's time to start thinking about building. That's, that's kinda what the general consensus is across the state. When you get to eighty percent capacity, you need to think about building. I guess the biggest takeaway was what's going on in Jackson County. Jackson County right now is under two, one big lawsuit. They just settled one, maybe another lawsuit for liability for a death in their jail. Let me share this with you. Why? Don't know. I guess that'd be for the jury and the courts to decide. They're undergoing that right now. Jackson County is one notch below us in beds per ten thousand per capita in the western end of the state. Out of fifteen western counties, we're third lowest with seventeen beds per ten thousand capacity. Jackson County's at sixteen, and Graham County's at nine. All the other counties... County's at 16, and Graham County's at nine. All the other counties, all 11 neighboring counties have more beds per 10,000. We're on the bottom of the list. Jackson County, I'm not going to say that was why, but it creates a huge problem for our jailers when they're stacked on top of each other. Creates liability for the taxpayers, liability for the county in case there's a death. By the way, I do know we do get some prisoners from other counties. Why? Because they're high risk. They may be committed an awful crime in another county, and they're afraid another inmate will kill them if they don't bring them to another county, and we do the same thing, from what I'm told. Liability for overcapacity. We're there. Jackson County, if they were here tonight, I know how they would vote. So those are a few takeaways. Mr. Chairman, I've taken a lot of time, but I feel like everybody here needed to hear what information. This is information. This is not inflammation. And now, there's a difference between inflammation and information. Inflammation gets people stirred up. Information is just what it is. It's the truth. And so this jail's built to state regulations. It's not a Taj Mahal. Hopefully, our tax burden, if we can get some more money out of our legislator, and with other sources of income looking good, maybe we can minimize that. We've got two years. I think I've answered a lot of these questions. Will the annex be demolished? Yes. Yes. It'll have to be demolished for the new project. And by the way, it's already condemned. It would cost millions to bring it up to code. It's not being used. That's 40 beds we lost. There's another thing. Oh, it's not a fancy jail. Let's see. Oh, Miss, I think they left. Young lady had the baby. I love babies. I wish we could see more of those. The court system let her down. I think her statements were that. Well, a lot of times, some of this catch and release and stuff is directly because we don't have room for them. So we'll have room for them. There'd be no excuse if we pass this. And so to her statements, I couldn't tell. I think she was maybe, that in itself speaks that we need to create more room for them. But I want to share something, one other thing. I'm through, Mr. Chairman. Back in February of '21, we had a guy in Kent and Waynesville out here that got locked up three times in one day and released. I got a picture of him. Our local newspaper ran a picture of him. Three times in one day, he got caught and released. The third time, he got kept because he was raping a woman right down here at Frog Level. That's a shame. We had the American flag burned right out here by a woman. Does anybody remember that? She was out on catch and release type deal. She had multiple offenses. Burnt the American flag right out here. Here's what Chief Adams from the town of Waynesville said about this. "Not everybody deserves to go to jail and stay in jail, but these repeat offenders, a lot of times, can end up with a more serious crime if they're released." Hello. Quote, "It decreases the incentive to follow the law. If they're in jail for an extended period of time, it can also give them time to clean up and get help." Sheriff Wilkie, and I'll close on this. Sheriff Wilkie wrote a letter to us back in February in support of the jail. I quote, I quote, "After reviewing available data and reports, communicating with experienced jail staff, and my personal observation of detention center activity since taking office, I believe that the expansion of our detention facility should take place as soon as possible. It has regularly been at or above operating capacity as indicated by the needs assessment previously completed by Mosel Architects and will likely continue to be in the near future." Again, quote Sheriff Wilkie in his letter to the commissioners. "In addition, I've reviewed plans and potential alternatives to the current design as it relates to direct supervision of detainees. I am satisfied that the current proposal offers the safest, most efficient means to protect our detainees and employees based on best practices and a standard model for detention centers like ours." Last paragraph, in closing, Sheriff Wilkie said, "I believe that one of the most overlooked facts of a jail is that it saves lives. While not a comfortable place, one that is admittedly designed to be a deterrent for criminal behavior, it is a safe and clean one. Far more deaths and injuries, particularly those related to our drug epidemic, occur outside of the jail. As uncomfortable as it may be, it is also a place where recovery can start. Sober living can gain a foothold, and lives can change the better. I encourage you to consider this as you decide how to proceed." Those folks, those three sheriffs, Sheriff Wilkie, I showed you his credentials. These people are elected by the citizens of Haywood County. They're elected officials. They're in the jail business. They're in the sheriffing business. And so I hope this answers some questions that were out here tonight. I feel very confident that I've covered the bases as an elected official for you. I also am confident that we're conservative as can be. I don't like this stuff. I don't like paying $3.49, 50 cents for a gallon of diesel fuel, and I paid $1.69 for it three years ago. I don't like it. Concrete skyrocketed. It has. Some people say it's a bad time to build. Well, maybe, maybe it's not. Some people say it's a bad time to build. Maybe it's not. I have the highest fund bounce in the history, latest history of the county. Our debt service is coming off. I think we can get more funds. If some of you know Mr. Pless, if this passes, please get in his ear about possibly getting some more funding, and that'll put us back down to where it originally started. It's our money. You pay the income taxes. And as I said, if we don't get it, it'll go to Wake County or Orange County or Brunswick or somewhere else. We need it here. He's done a good job at doing that. And so with that, I will yield back. I think you came here tonight. I hope I've answered some of your questions, maybe, maybe not, but give some people some more understanding of the process that we've been through over several years, not just a week or two. It's been several years. I'm not going to compromise public safety over politics. It's one of the cheapest things we do up here, is take care of the public. And they come down, these decisions come down the pipe, you deal with it. I wish I wasn't dealing with it, but I am. I'll yield back.
I just want to say a couple of things. I'd like to thank Christian for going over that. I think that'll help a lot of people understand what that keep other people from, you know, saying something that's not right, which if they've got a question, answering their question about that, I think would help a whole lot in it. And I'm like, Tommy, about the safety thing, but I do know we have some issues with, where the inmates are close to the officers and stuff up at the jail. And I'm not against the jail, and I don't think anybody out here is against the jail. It's that we know we have to have a jail. That's required in every county. But like I say, I think answering these questions, communication is a whole lot of, when you explain things to people, I think that helps more than anything else when they've got questions that I don't know anybody that don't want to know what's going on if they're paying for it. And I hope her explaining a lot of this stuff explains what's going on with a lot of things, and everybody knows I'm not against public safety, but I am against, or am for saving all the money we can for the county. And I appreciate everybody that came tonight, that maybe some of these questions did get answered, and I hope they did. If you've got any more questions, I'll try to get the answers for you. And again, like I say, we're not voting tonight to approve a jail. We're voting to award the contract of ANOY. And I think people would agree that we want somebody good to do it without having to rebid this and cost another ton of money. Thank you all.
Okay. I did just want to make just a couple of comments. And Tommy was right, talking about Sheriff Christopher. He came on board in 2013 and saw the need, how the jail was starting to run out of space. This is 11 years ago, okay? And he was thinking about coming and asking us for an expansion then, but the sheriff partnered with churches and introduced some faith-based programs, and I love faith-based programs because they work. And he put those programs into place, and it kept the jail population as well as the recidivism rate down. And to show you what he had to contend with was in 2014-ish, somewhere in that neighborhood, we had, the state passed a mandate that we had to house misdemeanors, and that equals to about 30 people at any given time, roughly, average, that added to our jail population. So Sheriff Christopher had to deal with that. Then, the jail annex was outdated. He could usually use it sparingly. It was supposed to be for 40 beds. He occasionally used it for women inmates when he needed to, and then I guess it finally got to where it wasn't usable anymore. So he had to contend with a 70-person turnaround, if you will. And then, of course, we partnered with Pathways. We were able to, we started Pathways in 2014, which has drastically helped our homeless population, helped people get into homes, and it's really, it's really done a great service for our community. In fact, they have a fundraiser Thursday night at Longchamp. I think they're already sold out. I think they sold out a long time ago. But anyway, Pathways has really helped keep that population down. Our churches have really kept the population down and the recidivism rate, but we have grown to the point where we can't keep it down anymore, and it has to, you know, we have to do something there. So, and we don't want our deputies running around western North Carolina as Uber drivers trying to find a place for them to stay, which was happening a few years ago whenever we had, you know, COVID was going on and things like that. And I have, I read something today where COVID, the post-COVID jail population is starting to rise again. So I think we're doing this at a good time. Our interest rate is very low. It's a little over 3.5%. I was really tickled. It was actually less by about a tenth of a percent than it was when we were going to do the expansion last year at this time. And then, let's see, I wanted to also mention, of course, both sheriffs were for this expansion. Our debt is very low right now. I think we have about a little less than $30 million or thereabouts in debt right now. We could loan, the state would let us go up to almost, I think, $600 million if we wanted to. Of course, we're not. But evidently, they look at counties and they say, "Well, your tax base will support this much debt." Well, we're at a very fraction of that, a fraction of that debt. So we've, I feel like we've made good decisions. The commissioner boards have made good decisions in the past. We've gotten buildings built. That building's paid for over there. The parking deck's paid for. The law enforcement center that we built will be paid for in a year or two. And there are several buildings that are coming off and rolling off, and we'll be able to take those debts, the debt roll-off, along with the grants we've got, and keep the, and to apply to the payment. So we've really done some good things to try to keep the impact to the tax base as low as we can. And the one thing I really like, and let me say this too, you know, he was talking about election. You know, I don't vote on something because I'm going to win an election or lose an election. I've lost an election before because I voted for something, and because it was, because I felt like it was the right thing to do, and I lost the next election, and that was why. That was one of the reasons why. So that doesn't affect me at all, because I'm always, always going to do what I think is right. I pray about things, and I feel like God leads me to do what's best for my community, and I feel like voting for this is the best thing now. And I just want to let the sheriff know, our sheriff is tough on crime. He's come in, he's put people in jail. They don't need to be, like Tommy said, they don't need to be Uber drivers driving people around the community. They need to be catching these people, dealing drugs to our kids, and committing crimes out there, and that's what we want our deputies to be doing. We want them staying right here in Haywood County, not driving around trying to find space for inmates. And I really appreciate our sheriff's stance that he's tough on crime. This commission board, we're going to, we've always supported our sheriffs, from Alexander to Suddles to Christopher and now Sheriff Wilkie. I have always supported those guys, and they'll all tell you that I have. And to me, this vote tonight is, I'm telling criminals that if you commit crime in Haywood County, we're going to have a place for you to go. We're going to have a place for you to stay, and we're going to have a place, you know, and it's going to be there, and you're going to be put there, and you're not going to be out there, you know, committing crime, stealing from our people. You're going to be in that jail. And like I say, our board supports law enforcement, and we back the blue. And I feel like my vote tonight is a support for law enforcement and backing our officers and our law enforcement. Our jail also houses all the towns. When our towns arrest people, they take them to our jail. So they don't have jails, I don't guess, much in the towns, at least not to the extent that we do. So this is for the whole county, and I feel like, you know, it is a lot of money. Our staff has worked a hard time. I appreciate all their work that they've done in doing this. So I'm just going to censor, and I usually don't do this, but I'm going to make a motion myself that we approve item two of the Riggler agenda to award the contract. And is there a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion?
One other discussion, one other item of discussion. I didn't, I was trying to answer all these questions. Before we vote, there was a comment about 62%, something concerning taxes. I think that's probably a takeoff from when Judy Hickman gave that statement about the revow. We're at 62% of current sales valuation. That means we're 38% behind current sales. Is that correct? That's correct.
Our tax values are 38% off the market from the last time the state, and that's the state's number. They did the audit of our most recent sales, and that's where we were.
Somebody called me and said that we were going to increase the property valuation by 62%. I'm like, where'd you get that? So I don't want to, but that goes ahead. We're 38% behind market. It's kind of, it's upside down. Yeah. So just want to clear that up. And this vote, this is to approve the jail project. Is that correct?
It awards the contract for construction to ANOY Construction. Correct.
Based off our last vote to get the financing and all that. So this is the jail vote?
Yes, sir.
Jail vote was last time, wasn't it? This is just for the, award the contract. It's way I understand it.
This is award the contract. The last vote was to go forward with the bond sale.
President.
Right. Correct.
Just to find out what we're voting on tonight, on the percentage and everything.
We could not, we could not award a contract if we didn't have the money from the bond sale.
Okay. I also want to say that Brandon Rogers and Jennifer Best have both said they would, if they would have been here tonight, and Jennifer had to leave in an emergency and Brandon's out of town, that they would have voted for in favor of this. So I do want to put that in the record, Amy, if you would, that they've indicated that they would vote for it also. Okay. So any other discussion? Although some favors indicate by saying, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. I see now it's three to nothing. Okay. We'll move on to appointments. We don't have any. We don't have a closed session. Does anybody have anything else to bring before the board?
No, other than, again, thanks for everybody that came out tonight. Appreciate your concern. And I'm like Commissioner Amy, if you want to talk to me face to face, try to answer some of your questions, I think some of you'll attest that I'm very agreeable to doing that. So I'd make a motion to adjourn if nobody else has anything to say.
On the favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned. Everybody be safe up there.